Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Board of County Commissioners Meeting of May 4, 2021. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge.
O merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Here. So, everyone's here and everybody's here on time. It's a good day. At this time, Commissioner Moore, I'll get over to you and let you talk about the resolution we're going to be.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning to everybody. We're thrilled to have Mr. Brian Ford here today from the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. Brian is the Chief Operating Officer for the world champion Tampa Bay Buccaneers. Let's give a round of applause. And if you don't mind, Brian, if you don't mind coming to the podium real quick.
Yep.
Our last meeting, we approved a resolution to honor the Tampa Bay Buccaneers and their championship and their Super Bowl victory. So at this time, I'd like to read that and then present you with that resolution.
Thank you.
So, a resolution to the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida congratulating the Tampa Bay Buccaneers on winning the Super Bowl, Super Bowl 55, whereas the Tampa Bay Buccaneers in the National Football League and represent the entire Tampa Bay community, both on the field and off the field through charitable efforts. And whereas during the 2020 season, the Tampa Bay Buccaneers set franchise records for number of wins on the road, number of consecutive wins, points scored, and touchdowns. And whereas the Tampa Bay Buccaneers were led by Coach Bruce Arians and record-setting performances from players such as Tom Brady, Robin Gronkowski, Mike Evans, Shaquille Barrett, Leonard Fournette, Sean Murphy Bunny, Ryan Sukup, and Devin White. And whereas the Bucks' efforts on and off the field instilled great community pride throughout the greater Tampa Bay region and in Pasco County. And whereas on February 7, 2021, the Tampa Bay Buccaneers became the first team to play in and win the Super Bowl in their home stadium at Raymond James Stadium in Tampa Bay by defeating the Kansas City Chiefs 31-9. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida. That said, Board hereby congratulates the Tampa Bay Buccaneers on winning Super Bowl 55. Done and resolved with a quorum present and voting this day, the 20th of April, 2021. Thank you so very much. Big round of applause.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore and the entire commission and everybody in attendance. The support that we received during a very unprecedented season is just remarkable. I've told people across the country that we have the best fan base in all of sports. And last season, what we all went through was a pandemic. And the team created a unity and Coach Arians and the Glazer family, I mean, the safety of our team, the players, the coaches, and the public was our number-one priority. But at the end of the day, to be able to win a championship like we did in our hometown, the only thing that we missed was having the opportunity to have all our fans there. But on behalf of the Glazer family and our entire organization, this outwarming of support is just unbelievable. And to have us here today is just remarkable. I can't thank you enough. And more importantly than that, though, I'd like to thank you all for what you've done to keep our community open and getting through this. And together we will. And we've all learned something from the past year, and I think that we can build on that. But the fan support in this community is just second to none. And thank you very much again for this opportunity.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Ford. If you don't mind, I'm going to bring this resolution down to you. I'm going to step back up and we can take a photo.
That would be fantastic.
Okay. You guys up here? Do you want to go down?
Let's go down.
We're going to go down.
Down.
I think we're at that point. We can go down. That'd be great.
We're going down. This is the first time we've come down in a few years.
Wow. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Just leave it here for one second. I'll be outside and you can see the sign.
Step back over.
Yep.
Let's, let's.
The front of the truck. Are you, are you okay?
Sure. Okay.
Okay. Stand by. Hopefully, they haven't broken that down yet.
They're waiting to see what else.
Okay.
So, I see all of these little boxes, right? Yeah. Yeah. I see that's the pass. You wore your box tie on.
I did. I got a box tie on.
I used to have a box tie on. It's a little painful. Oh.
Yeah, every. The lapel pins from myself. All right. Got it. Cool.
Got to have the little party trophy.
Oops, it's got 21 pence.
There, that's positive.
This is what I don't like.
All right. Everybody look right at me first, and then I'll switch out to Derek. Say, "Go Bucks."
Go Bucks.
Got it.
Let's put this on the calendar for next day.
But next time, we have to bring it here. We have our house at our first start of the year.
I was in Tallahassee, and I was on the sun before. And I showed a cool, we're going here just like we did at all the time. Had me in the corner, and I said, "Now, I'd like to introduce you here with us today, the quarterback of the business side of the..."
There you go. They all went, "Ah." So, it was kind of, they flitted me and kind of... So, the quarterback of the business side of the...
Thank you, all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the same day, I came to the office for this one, basically.
All right. We're good.
Thank you.
You went and walked down with us.
Yeah.
But no worries about the trophy. We will come up.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Wish we could have that every year. Okay. We'll resume our meeting. We're going to resume our meeting. At this time, Mr. Stasana, will you please read over today's proceedings with the BCC?
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. On March 12, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners declared a local state of emergency after the governor issued Executive Orders 2051 Public Health Emergency and 2052 State of Emergency related to COVID-19, which has recently been extended by Executive Order 2194 on April 27, 2021. The Board is holding its board meeting with a quorum physically present, utilizing communications-media technology for the public and team members to participate. A detailed notice indicating the Board's intent to conduct a hybrid virtual meeting has been posted on the Board's website. On September 25, 2020, the governor issued Executive Order 20244, moving the state into Phase 3 of the governor's Safe, Smart, Step-by-Step Order, which was extended by Executive Order 20297 issued on November 24, 2020. Large gatherings of over 50 people is still not recommended to congregate in any public space that does not readily allow for appropriate social distancing. The public is being afforded an opportunity to make public comments either in writing or by use of communications technology that has been afforded. The Board adopted Resolution 20182 on June 30, 2020, establishing the procedural rules for hybrid virtual meetings, such as the one being held today. As with any meeting in which you take action, you are required to take public comment on any proposition pursuant to Section 286.0114 Florida Statute, signed available for any questions.
Okay. Now's the time for public comments. Citizens are given the opportunity to comment on any item this morning coming before the Board during this section. The Board also takes public comment on items to be placed on future Board agenda and other business under their review. Due to COVID-19 operations and to safeguard the well-being and safety of our citizens and staff, today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, will we take public comment from those who have pre-registered for WebEx, Link, and are currently in queue? After, we will read into the record public comments, documents, PowerPoints, or videos that have been identified by members of the public to be read out loud late at the meeting or received and filed. Also, those will be limited to three minutes each. Finally, we will take public comment from those currently signed up at the kiosks. Comments are not to exceed three minutes. This new format does not waive the request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally toward any commissioner or team member, but rather toward the issues. This provides mutual respect between Board members and the public. For WebEx and kiosk participants, after stating your name and address for the clerk, the time will be activated and will start a countdown. After two minutes, one beep will sound, letting you know that you have one minute remaining. After the time is up, two beeps will sound, letting you know that your three minutes are up and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected when their time is up. And kiosks participants will be asked to step away from the kiosks. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up on WebEx?
Yes, Chairman, we do have people who have signed up. There's nine that have signed up, but only four are in the queue.
Okay.
And possibly two could be in one.
All right. Let's start with them.
Okay. The first one on, the first citizen on public comment is Todd Pressman. Mr. Pressman, if you could state your name and address for the record and then begin.
Todd Pressman, 207 South, Number 451 in St. Peter Brook, Florida.
Can you hear me?
Chairman and Board members? I don't have a phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and Board members, as you recall, I was representative for the Meadowbrook area for the residents and citizens, directly and indirectly, for the CPA. Now, we have heard rumors that there might be a reconsideration. That's not an agenda item, so we're speaking of public comment, and there's other people to speak. We prefer to speak if that request were to come up. However, there has been some communication with the applicant. There is no agreement. There's nowhere near agreement. The applicant has been made aware from the citizens exactly what would be acceptable, which is office-level use. That has not been presented. That has not been discussed, as far as I understand. So, any reconsideration of this request is absolutely unacceptable to the citizens in any manner. The commissioners weighed this issue very closely, spent many hours in review of it, and our position is that no reconsideration is in order, nor is any reconsideration in any manner close to any kind of consideration by the citizens of any kind. That has been clearly communicated to the applicant and is, again, not acceptable to the citizens. We would ask the county commission to remain with their votes, again, which were very closely reviewed and considered, and we feel correct and would be opposed to any reconsideration request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, has anyone on this Board heard anything about a reconsideration? Because I have not.
No, not by that word, I don't think so.
Commissioner Starkey, I know the applicant was reaching out, asking if there could be a reconsideration.
Oh.
I know when the applicant did reach out to me, I had mentioned, I said, "Why, yesterday, personally, I said, 'Why haven't I heard any agreement with the citizens or the neighborhood, myself?'"
Yeah, there's nothing.
So, there's something with the citizens, you know? I'm not considering one.
Okay. I just...
This is not up for discussion. We're in public comment.
I know. She asked before.
This is my district, and no one's...
Madam Clerk.
I have not heard of a reconsideration. Okay.
Next.
The next citizen signed up is Charles Thomas, and there may also be another individual on that line. Mr. Thomas, if you could, please state your name and address for the record and then begin your comments. Thank you.
Good to hear you.
Mr. Thomas, we are unable to hear you. Is he unmuted?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, we're unable to hear you. You are showing as unmuted. You can come back to him, Chair.
We'll come back to him.
Okay. The next individual is Luke, I believe the last name is Larret.
LaRoe.
Thank you, LaRoe. I'll get that one day. Mr. LaRoe, if you could please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's Luke LaRoe, 2240 Bel Air Road, Clearwater, Florida, 33764. And I, too, was working with Mr. Pressman. We made extensive presentations the last time that what we referred to as the Meadowbrook Project came up. If that's not coming up today, then I really don't have anything to add what Mr. Pressman had said. I do know that the rules for rehearing are as you need to bring something new to the table. There needs to be some new evidence or some new information. Based on the elaborate nature of the prior presentations and the extensive environmental research and comp plan research that was presented, I don't know what new would change your mind, but if it's not on the docket, then I will wish you a happy day and thank you for the privilege of addressing you this morning.
Next.
Right. Then, next individual is Jess Stempian.
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 Yan.
Friends.
Stempian.
Yes, Jess Stempian, 1102 Wildwood Lane, Lutes, Florida, 33558. And I am speaking on behalf of what Mr. Pressman and Mr. LaRoe were talking to. Also, if there is a reconsideration that comes up for that item regarding the land-comp plan amendment at 54 and Meadowbrook, our residents have not been notified of any changes. We are not in agreement with what is proposed to go there. So, I wanted to make sure that the commissioners heard that from one of the residents that live here. And just know that we don't support that comp plan amendment. And if it does come up under miscellaneous items, I would definitely like to speak on it at that time. Thank you.
Thank you for comments.
Mr. Chair, we're going to go back to Mr. Thomas. Charles Thomas, you are unmuted. You state your name and address for the record, please. Is there a Jerry Thomas?
You show him on there, or?
Show him that he's connected. He's unmuted.
Okay. We are showing that you are connected and unmuted.
Let's move on to the next one.
That's all I have, sir.
That's all we have?
On WebEx.
Okay. Do we have any emails to be read and direct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have 13 emails.
Okay.
Would you like to go to kiosk first?
Let me go to the kiosk first. Is anyone at kiosks?
There is no one at the kiosk.
All right. Thank you. Let's go back to read the emails.
Thank you, sir.
Great. The first email is from Tracy Kelly Cox, address 13427 Starfish Drive, Hudson, Florida, 34667. Please read at the Board of County Commissioners Hybrid Virtual Meeting on 5421. Hello, my name is Tracy Kelly Cox, and I live at 13427 Starfish Drive, Hudson, Florida, 34667. I am a new resident, and I am so happy to be here, as I have waited a lifetime to own property on the Gulf. I chose this area for many reasons, one of which was the house that I chose to buy is not deed-restricted and does not have an HOA. I chose this community as I spent many years as a vacation or a visitor here and fell in love with the community and its residents for its welcoming attributes. Hi, I am in the process of improving my home, thus improving the property values of the home in my area. Hi, in the future, would like to build a dock and to cover a boat with a canopy as to protect my property from the elements that a boat and sun umbrella cover cannot just, as I protect my car by putting it in a garage. I was hoping to do the same thing for the boat, as they are expensive and need the protection of a canopy. Please consider this in your thought process as to why you are not restricting, as to why you are now restricting homeowners from using their property in a way to protect their property that is on the water, which is the entire reason why we are here. We have paid the premium price to be on the water here and tend to be for the remainder of our lives, and to be able to put a canopy over my boat lift is essential. Thank you for letting me voice my opinion, and please consider it when making your vote, as I will be watching, as I will be living here for the rest of my life, the rest of my time. Next email is from Marie Mancuso, address is 13608 Maria Drive, Hudson, Florida, 34667. While involved, I find the commissioners going after this witch hunt to have a personal agenda. I find it to be against my rights as a waterfront homeowner to protect my very expensive cabin cruiser boat. When we bought our home two years ago, we inquired about boat covers and were told we were allowed to proceed. At the time, we did not move forward with the cover, but planned for the future. This is the main reason I purchased my home, to be within a coastal community of boaters and to be on the water with easy access to the Gulf front. The comments about the blocking views is absurd to me. Most of us live on a canal and not Gulf front. If you were Gulf front, it would not obstruct the view you purchased. I travel all over the state of Florida, and the boat lift covers are everywhere, to include lakefront and Gulf front homes. Why is it that the boat covers are allowed in lakefront residential areas in Pasco County but not allowed Gulf front? Take a look at the Moon Lake area and other lakes within Pasco County. Why have they not received code violations or told to remove? Sea Ranch area in which I live is not governed by an HOA, and we never had any issues until one, until one said commissioner has a personal dislike, and the others followed suit with no regard to the community in which they are voted in by. The waterfront communities have never been studied or coastal residents asked for input on this matter. This is my opinion, is just another stronghold, Commissioner, out to prove a point that does not live within a Gulf front community. I live in a very attractive street in our community. We have discussed this matter at our neighborhood gatherings, and we will help fight for our rights to protect our boats in the way we can. We should be focused on future plans for the Hudson Beach area and the much-needed dredging of our channels and canals. We aren't commissioners focused on the homeless problem, why aren't commissioners focused on the homeless problem within our coastal areas and raising crime rates within our communities instead of fighting against the very members that voted them into office? We are coastal community, and we should be left to function as one. The next email is from John and Bev Baird. Address is 13521 Garris Drive, Hudson, Florida, 34667. My wife, Beverly, and I have lived in Hudson for 22 years, in September 20 years at 13521 Garris Drive in Sea Ranch, but always on the water. I do not have a cover on my boat lift, but wish I did, as it would be nice to protect the 40,000 I have invested in my boat. These lifts that are removable canvases are not an eyesore like you think. In fact, we hardly notice them over, we hardly notice them other than it looks like a great way to protect your investment. I have heard that they may be a hindrance to navigation. This I would doubt, as we don't use a sextant to cruise channels, canals, or Gulf. Please take it from a 22-year resident couple that are not a, they are not a problem to me or anyone who lives out here. I doubt that we have any county commissioners living in Sea Ranch to complain. If so, close your eyes. Please allow us our freedom, as most active political figures are trying to control us or restrict us. We are people, not sheeple. Let us live at and enjoy the time we have on this earth. Thanks, John and Beverly Baird. Next email is from Carol Van Dusen. Address is 21207 Kelly Rosa Drive, Land O' Lakes, Florida, 34637. My comment is in reference to the decision the BCC made at the 292021 meeting to have boat lift canopies removed. Mr. Moore and Mrs. Starkey made comments during discussions about the Miami Palm Beach and West Palm Beach area. They said they don't have them, nor do they allow them. Mrs. Starkey said to Google Earth the area and see for yourself. Well, I did just that. After looking over the area, the conclusion I have come to is this: They don't have them because there is no place they could, they would be practicable. They have most, almost all, I'm sorry, they have almost no areas that would be similar to our coastline in Pasco County. Almost all their canals and rivers are commercial. They have mostly very large boats and even have ships in the canals and rivers. You can't put covers over these types of vessels. You're not comparing apples to apples when you use that area of Florida for comparison. It's sad that you think we should be like the Miami Palm Beach area. We are old Florida in Hudson, and we like it. You are on the BCC to represent our needs here. We are not, we are nothing like the area, like that area, and we never will be. This whole issue about boat covers seems to be coming from a very small area in Gulf Harbors. Even the 2010 ordinance seems to have come about in the same, in the same small group to Gulf Harbors. Why is the county so in bed with this area? Why aren't people in Mr. Mariano's district just as important? Do we not have as much money? Are our homes not as nice? We want a voice in our district affairs. We don't want Gulf Harbors making our decision. Release District 5 from this ordinance. We don't want it. We don't need it. Make us happy and get out of our neighborhood. The next email is from Ken Howell. Address is 21039 Los Cabos Court, Land O' Lakes, Florida, 34637. I'm commenting today to express my feelings about some things the BCC had spoken about at the 292021 meeting when you voted to have a boat lift covers removed. Mrs. Starkey said my neighbors don't want them. Well, guess what? Your neighbors don't have to get one. I have one, and I love it. Some of my neighbors also have them. Why should your neighbor's opinions matter more than my neighbor's opinions? If you Google Earth, you will see a lot of places where they appear to be in a cluster. You'll, you know why that is? One person has one installed, his neighbor sees it and thinks, "Man, that's a great idea. I want one of those." Next thing you know, the neighbors put them up. These covers are very well-built and modern-looking. Some boat members give the impression that they are going to be a blowing, to be blowing away all over the neighborhood. You make it sound like there are movie sharknados. But instead of sharks flying around in the wind attacking people, we will have vinyl covers flying around everywhere in the neighborhood, seeking out people to attack. If wind blew off my vinyl cover, it wouldn't be any more dangerous than anything else found outside our home. If we have those types of winds, we have probably already been ordered to evacuate the coastline. Make us happy and get out of our neighborhood. The next email is from Ken Howell. Address is 21039 Los Cabos Court, Land O' Lakes, Florida, 34637. I'm commenting today to express my feelings about some things the BCC had spoken about at the 292021 meeting when you voted to have a boat lift covers removed. Mrs. Starkey said my neighbors don't want them. Well, guess what? Your neighbors don't have to get one. I have one and I love it. Some of my neighbors also have them. Why should your neighbors' opinions matter more than my neighbor's opinions? If you Google Earth, you will see a lot of places where they appear to be in a cluster. You'll, you know why that is? One person has one installed, his neighbor sees it and thinks, man, that's a great idea. I want one of those. Next thing you know, the neighbors put them up. These covers are very well-built and modern-looking. Some boat members give the impression that they, that they are going to be a blowing, to be blowing away all over the neighborhood. You make it sound like there are movie sharknados. But instead of sharks flying around in the wind attacking people, we will have vinyl covers flying around everywhere in the neighborhood seeking out people to attack. If wind blew off my vinyl cover, it wouldn't be any more dangerous than anything else found outside our home. If we have those types of winds, we have probably already been ordered to evacuate the coastline. The wind is not going to blow the frame away. You have magnified this issue unnecessarily to justify your reasons for voting against them. We have thousands of aluminum carports everywhere in the county. Most of them are only held up by three or four aluminum poles and secured with small metal, small sheet metal screws. These are very much more likely to blow around and injure people than a piece of vinyl fabric. Yet, we still have them. Point is, you can't protect everybody from everything. Most people are smart enough to seek shelter in a high-wind event. BCC says they are navigation hazards. This too is overhyped to justify not allowing them. These are twelve to fifteen feet over the water. No way do they interfere with boat traffic. If they are a problem, your boat is way too big for the area or you are on a cruise ship that made a wrong turn. I have never heard a person say, man, that's one minute. Man, I had a hell of a time motoring my boat around because of all the canopies and boathouses in my way. In closing, I am asking the board to reconsider having boat covers removed. Don't let one neighborhood against them decide for everyone else on the coast. Thank you for listening. Next email is from Clyde Ware. Address is 21207 Cali Rosa Drive, Land O' Lakes, Florida, 34637. My comments are in reference to the BCC voting to possibly have boat covers removed. At the 292021 BCC meeting, commissioners used the word "view" nine times. Some even stated it as a right. So I sent them an email and asked them to explain what are the parameters of a view, of a, of a right to a view? Where does this view start and where does it end? As it, as is norm these days, none of them sent back an answer. They are not answering any emails. I think they are still in COVID mode and hiding in their bunkers. After all, it worked for Joe. After reading everything I can find about Florida riparian rights, this is the conclusion I have come up with. This is just my opinion. Other people may read all about, I'm sorry, other people may read all they can find and come up with their own opinion. Good luck. When they refer to right to view, it is where the water touches your property and does not mean any possible thing you could see from your property. If you go to Property Appraisers map site, you can see your property lines. If you extend them out into the water between these lines, this is your right to view. There are some exceptions like a sharply curved area or coves or lots that have crazy angles. These areas are normally split evenly between adjoining properties. If you are on a canal and in most cases your right to view is directly in front of you, not to the left or to the right. You and your neighbor have the right to build piers, docks, lifts, et cetera. You have no right to view, to a view that goes over to your neighbor's property. You can't take away his right to build by extending your right to a view. I do not write the following. I do not write the following. It was written by a lawyer. Right to view and right to ingress and egress Florida common law recognizes that riparian rights specifically include the right to an unobstructed view and the right of ingress to and egress from the water. Florida common law is, in its recognition of a right to unobstructed view, the Florida Supreme Court clarified that the right to ingress and egress includes the right to erect wharves, piers and docks in order to facilitate access to and the use of navigable waters. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection in recognition of potential conflicts among competing rights has acknowledged that an order of priority has been implied through various Florida court decisions. Specifically, the dominant riparian right is usually the nearshore right of ingress and and to and egress from navigable waters, which takes precedence over the right to view and other specific rights. Me talking again, when, what does the, what the BCC did on 6/1/2010 is questionable and possibly illegal. They took right aways granted to me in the state constitution and gave them to a neighbor. They did not have the power to do this. The right to view, the right to view thing really needs to be looked into. Thank you for listening. The next email is from Gina Love. Ms. Love's address is 7809 Willowbrook Court. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for your, for this opportunity to address you. Commissioner Mariano is going to make comments under Old Business. I urge you, I urge you to consider what he's going to say. My name is Gina Love. I live at 7809 Willowbrook Court in Lakeside Woodlands, right across the street from a huge sinkhole that opened up in August 2019. I'm a Pasco County teacher and a single mom raising a twelve-year-old son. That single and the fallout from it have altered our lives in very negative ways. After testing by at least two geotechnical companies using ground penetrating radar and with the occurrence of the Florida Emergency Management Team, it was determined that a section of Willowbrook Court had to be closed permanently because it was unreparable. The barricaded area included six homes, one of which is mine. That's when my nightmare began. I could no longer drive to, up to my house. I have to park behind the barricade approximately fifty feet from my garage. Some of my neighbors have to park approximately two hundred feet from their garages. For me, that means that when I leave for work in the morning, I am walking in the dark to my car. No trash pickup days. I have to drag my two trash pails fifty feet in each direction. When I go food shopping, I have to get my, I have to get my wagon from the garage, wheel it to my car, load the groceries into the wagon and then pull the loaded wagon back to my garage. Sometimes it requires two to three trips. The Beacon Woods Cave System that is the cause of many of the sinkholes in our area runs under Willowbrook Court and under my house. Right after the big sinkhole opened up across the street from my house, I had a large sinkhole open in my rear yard because my son played in this yard and my little dog ran around in that yard. I had the sinkhole filled in immediately at a cost of $5,000. The county emergency management staff under the direction of Andy Fosa worked very hard to try to help us. They responded to Willowbrook Court several times to check the status of the sinkhole, hired a geotechnical company to examine the hole and used ground penetrating radar to check the underground anomalies and over the past year and a half submitted several funding requests to FEMA. So our usable, our resale, so our unsalable and potentially dangerous houses could be acquired by the county and demolished. The funding requests to FEMA are repeatedly denied. I constantly hear noises coming from under my house and I fear the house can collapse at any time. To assure my son's safety, I sent him to live with my parents in Odessa. Now I only get to see my son on weekends. This is not only taking an emotional toll on me but also on my son. We need to be together but can only happen with your help. Thank you. The next email is from Carl Garitani. No address provided. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to address you. Commissioner Mariano is going to make comments under Old Business. I urge you, I urge you to give serious consideration to what he is going to say. My name is Carl Garitani. My wife and I live at Lakeside Woodlands for thirty-eight years until we decided to downsize about eleven months ago. Our daughter Gina Love and her grandson Gavin moved into Lakewood, Lakeside Woodlands five years ago so they could be close to us. They live just six houses away from us on Willowbrook Court. Gina moved near us, near, because she was concerned with our advanced age, we would need help with some things and she would be close enough to help us. Even though she is a single mother and a schoolteacher raising her son without any help from her ex-husband, she would find time for her elderly parents. At some point, my wife and I decided to downsize and move into a community where they maintain the outside of the house because those chores were getting to be too much for me. Our plan was that my wife and I would find a community we wanted to move to and Gina would sell her house and follow us there. Our plan was shattered in August of 2019 when a huge sinkhole opened up across the street from my daughter's house. After investigation by Pasco County State Emergency Management Personnel and GPR testing, it was determined that a section of Willowbrook Court was unreparable and had to be closed permanently. My daughter's house is within the barricaded area. Since the barricades went up, my daughter can no longer drive to her house. She has to park behind the barricade and walk to her house every day, rain or shine, warm or cold weather, daylight or nighttime. This has been going on for a year and a half and there is no end in sight. Andy Fosa and the emergency management staff have tried to help by applying to FEMA several times for grant money to acquire the affected homes and demolish them because of the potential danger of collapse and unstable roadway. Each time, their funding request has been denied. The Beacon Woods Cave System runs under parts of the Willowbrook Court and my daughter's house. Because of the threat of more sinkholes opening near or under her house and the fact that she hears noises coming from under her house, Gina sent Gavin to live with me and my wife in Odessa. So not only does Gavin not have his father in his life, but now he only sees his mother two days a week on the weekends. No child should have to live like that. Due to the sinkhole, the barricade and unreparable road and the danger of collapse, Gina's house and the other affected homes will never be able to be sold and these people will be doomed to live as I've described for the rest of their lives unless you agree to help them. Please help. The next email is Mary Jane Sessa. Address is 7711 Willowbrook Court. My name is Mary Jane Sessa. I live at 7711 Willowbrook Court. Even though my home is outside the barricades, the closing of the road still remains a hardship and worries me every day. I lost my husband in December. Prior to his passing, there were four occasions where he defibrillator went off and 9/11 was called. I watched as it took the ambulance and fire trucks extra minutes to back up and make the U-turn to get off of my street and my husband to the hospital. Being over eighty and with my own medical conditions, I'm afraid any extra time to get help could be detrimental. All of the delivery vehicles having to use my driveway to turn around has caused damage to my mailbox as well as my lawn. As a widow on limited income, I can't afford to replace my lawn and continue to get new mailboxes. I watch my neighbors with disabilities between the barricades using wheelbarrows to carry items and limping to their vehicles that are parked far away. Children can't play outside because we worry for their safety. I may not live within the barricades, but I am one of the fifteen homes that the county recommended to be demolished. I live by myself and with anxiety every day wondering if my house is safe. I just want to feel safe again. Thank you for your time. So I have, the next one is Tom and Mary Murray. We are Thomas E. and Mary Jane Murray and we live at 7805 Willowbrook Court, Hudson, Florida. Our home is part of the barricaded road closure imposed by the EOC with ground penetrating radar voids and anomalies were found under our particular road area. The problem first started in August 13, 2019 when the retention pond between Willowbrook Court and Sylvan Drive developed several soil collapse features. You can view this on google.com/foxnews, October 16, 2019, Lakeside Woodlands Sinkholes, Sinkholes and also on ABC Action News, October 25, 2019, which addresses the seventy-six depressions comprising sinkhole activity. Fencing around the retention pond, filling in voids along the roads, barricades, federal FEMA and state funding attempts, observed damage of geological activity and structural damage. The consensus now focuses the, on the road closure that will never be reopened. The road is unreparable. This problem is not like anything else that has happened in Pasco County. It is an extreme and unforeseeable, unforeseen event which has continually impacted our quality of life for almost two years. There are three homes in the barricaded area where four handicapped individuals continue to reside. We cannot park in our driveways. We have to haul our garbage outside in the, the barricades and transport our groceries and purchases to our home via a wheelbarrow. Major issues now arise with the inability to get contractors to do anything for us because they cannot get close to our home. Some examples that we are experiencing are needing a new roof for our home to renew homeowner's insurance, replacing the air conditioner and ductwork system. Attic insulation removal that has to be suctioned out of the attic due to rodent infestation. Contractors need to have access to the roads for their trucks to complete the work. The garbage trucks have to back down the curved road eleven hundred feet to pick up garbage. Mosquito control cannot go down the road to spray even though we pay taxes to have it done. The county cannot clean our sewer system because, cannot get our section of the road. My husband had a cardiac event requiring emergency help. Even though the ambulance and fire truck came within five minutes, they could not get close to our home due to residents of homes parking their cars outside of the barricade. With all due respect, we need your help. The EOC has been working very hard to obtain funding from the federal FEMA and state government to no avail. Thank you to them as the, thank you to them and the county administrator for attending our last meeting. Also, thank you to our Commissioner, Mr. Mariano, for his continued support. Out of the fourteen homes and one lot, only seven homes want to, want the buyout. This is, one half of the monies originally requested in the beginning. Your consideration and action in the quality of our life matter would be gratefully appreciated. The next email is Kelly Usher and Mike Solkorsky. I want this email read into the record during the May 14 B OCC meeting. Hello, we live at 7802 Willowbrook Court in Hudson at Lakeside Woodlands Community. Mike and I are right outside the barrier of the closed road. We are fortunate enough to have our driveway, but outside our house is a parking lot for the houses that do not. Thankfully, we have cameras in, in our cars which helps us to back out safely. It is a maze at times. August 13, 2019 was the day that we had two depressions open in our backyard around the same time it opened in the retention pond. That day, I was bathing the dogs. I kept hearing strange noises. I thought Mike came home early. It sounded like the garage door open, opening. I went out to look and it was not him. Then it kind of freaked me out, so I looked around the inside of the house and then to, then to the front yard, nothing. So I went back to bathing the dogs. When I finished, I took the dogs outside, out back to go potty. I saw a big hole with wires and broken pipes where the dog's fence, fenced-in area is. Thankfully, it did not just let, thankfully, I did not just let them run out. I called Mike and told him to get home. There's a big hole in the ground. When he came home, he walked the backyard and found another depression. What was scary about the one in the grass was intact, yet it ended up being deeper than the one by the house. The large hole was around ten by ten and around ten feet deep. It was a couple yards from the cement patio. The other was a bit smaller in size, but we were told deeper than the other. Mike had made, had made many phone calls to see what to do. Eventually, he talked to LRE and to give them, to have them come over and fill the holes. While they were filling them, a third appeared. Looking back now and knowing what we know, we should have never had filled them. We learned at our EOC meeting that filling them could make it worse, spreading it down, spreading it all down the cave system. That was a cost of sixty-four hundred out of a profit. They did try to charge over eight thousand, but thankfully, Mike knew enough to calculate how much dirt and foam was used and it was not worth the price they were trying to give. We were and still are fortunate for them from, we are still, we, we were and still are fortunate for the help from EOC. They were there for us since the beginning of this nightmare and yes, it is a nightmare. It is a fear of the unknown when it happened in August for a few months. We had the support of the news too, but then the coronavirus happened and we slid to the back burner. Believe me, I get it. I am a CMA at Moffett Cancer Center. Because of this, we stopped the in-person meetings with the EOC and received monthly newsletters. They tried getting us grant money from FEMA. It was always declined. We really believe now it is a bigger job than what the EOC can't assist with and that FEMA will not help with. Since we do not qualify for any grants moving forward. I think that's two minutes. The next email is from Barbara Guerin. Address is 7803 Willowbrook Court, Hudson, Florida, 34667. My name is Barbara Guerin. My husband William and I are homeowners that reside in between the barricades in Willowbrook Court in Lakeside Woodlands. We purchased our home unaware of the caverns underneath in two thousand, in January 2019. In August 13, 2019, just since I have seven months of living in our new home, a very large sinkhole opened up across the street with many more to follow closely around us. We also had anomalies in our front and backyard that we had to keep filling. After testing was completed, I believe it showed a total of seventy-six anomalies. As a result, our road had to be closed permanently, leaving us without access to our driveway. We have been forced to park, carry groceries, garage pails, et cetera, over a hundred fifty feet away from our house for a total of three hundred feet each trip. My husband and I are seniors with health issues. My husband is a Purple Heart Vietnam veteran who continues to suffer both mentally who continues to suffer both mentally and physically from the war. His physical limitations make it very hard for him to travel that extra 300 feet. So we had to purchase an electric scooter to assist him. My husband watches me struggle to use a wheelbarrow to get groceries to my door. He sees me dragging large garbage cans past the barricades and worries about me getting hurt. We continue to notice changes happening in our home. Some of these changes include part of the garage ceiling collapsing, gutters breaking away from the house, tile floor and fireplace cracking, kitchen sinks collapsing underneath, kitchen cabinets collapsing, closet doors are not closing, cracks on driveways are getting larger, and there is shifting in the front sides and backyard. These are just a few examples, but every day we hear noises and live in fear, wondering what will happen next. This constant worrying, stress, and anxiety is taking a toll on the both of us. My husband is having heart problems, and I was diagnosed with an ulcer. Overall, it's affecting our health and quality of life. We appreciate all efforts made by the Pasco Emergency Management Team to try and end this 21-month nightmare. Unfortunately, by no fault of their own, they were unable to do so. Need your help to get this resolved so we can enjoy the rest of our lives. Please help us and our neighbors. Last email. This is emails from Candace and James Streitenberger. Address is 7807 Willowbrook Court, Hudson, Florida. I want this, sorry. First off, I would like to thank everyone here in taking the time to listen to our concerns. I understand how crucial your work in office is, especially in these unprecedented times. However, our unique situation is also unprecedented. And at this point, downright scary. Myself, my husband, and our nine-year-old daughter reside at 7807 Willowbrook Court in the Lakeside Woodlands Development in Hudson. You may remember nearly two years ago, our quiet neighborhood flooded the news with 76 depressions. Some sinkholes opened in under three months. Some of the depressions were on private property and at this point, most filled by the homeowners. However, the largest sinkhole that lies directly across the street from my home remains open. As a result of this extensive ground collapse, Pasco Emergency Management sent out several engineer companies. During the investigation, a void was discovered under Willowbrook Court directly in front of our driveway. The reports indicate that any vibration from traffic could potentially cause the road to crumble. So out of the safety concerns, the road was closed. More research and investigations proceeded to come up with a solution to fix the road, only to discover the void under the road could not be fixed due to a massive cave system below. All of the engineering companies agreed potential work above the cave system could cause the cave to collapse, causing further damage to other properties. Therefore, Pasco Emergency Management made the decision to close portions of Willowbrook Court permanently. The roadblock includes a total of six homes. Pasco Emergency Management announced they would assist in seeking out federal grants to purchase our homes. We know Pasco County Emergency Management worked diligently in seeking out assistance, and for this, we are thankful. However, now nearly two years later, grant after grant has been denied for purchasing our homes. I cannot go on about, I can go on and on about the inconvenience of not having access to our homes, the inconvenience of parking 250 feet away from our home, and yes, I've measured. The inconvenience of hauling groceries to the house in a wagon. The inconvenience of routine auto maintenance as my husband is forced to work on our cars in the middle of a road instead of the safety of a garage. The inconvenience of hauling soccer balls, coolers, and folding chairs back and forth between the car and the house multiple times a week since our daughter plays competitive soccer with Florida Premier. The inconvenience of sometimes doing all of this in the rain. The inconvenience of constant delivery mix-ups because FedEx and UPS are inconvenienced. The financial inconvenience of our well no longer functioning normal. The end of August 2019, we contacted a company who came out to examine our well when it stopped pulling water. Out of safety concerns, he was unwilling to dig to examine the well. The contractor indicated that he felt the surrounding extensive ground collapse was involved in our well. That's the three-minute mark.
Okay.
That's the last email.
That's the last email?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, we now conclude the public hearing comment portion of the meeting. And we will move on to RES 1, Resolution. So this resolution is by Board of County Commissioners for Water Reuse. So. Y'all can come forward.
Chairman and Commissioners, we want to thank you for recognizing reuse week. The county has an extensive reclaim system, so we appreciate your support.
Yeah, we appreciate your work. Could you give us your name and address for the clerk?
Chris McCarty, 18240 Long Lake Drive, Hudson, Florida, 34667.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution.
Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 21-172, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the third week of May as water reuse week in Pasco County and calling upon citizens and businesses to help protect our precious water resources by practicing water-saving measures and using reclaimed water in an efficient and effective manner. Whereas, safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Pasco County's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors. And res, although Pasco County has a limited supply of fresh water in our lakes, rivers, and underground aquifers, the county's population and need for water resources continues to increase. And whereas Florida has established the encouragement and promotion of water reuse as state objectives in chapters 373 and 403 Florida statutes. And res, reuse water is purified using science-based standards to meet specific needs, including environmental restoration, irrigation, industrial operations, and energy generation. It also helps to ensure a reliable supply of potable water during times of extreme drought. And res, Florida has risen to be the national leader in water reuse, reusing 820 million gallons of reclaimed water per day to conserve freshwater supplies and replenish our river streams, lakes, and aquifers. And res, Florida's permitted reuse capacity is more than 1.7 billion gallons per day, representing approximately 67% of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic wastewater treatment facilities. And res, Pasco County has implemented a dynamic reclaimed water program, which encourages safe, efficient, and effective use of reclaimed water. And where as Pasco County treats wastewater to, I'm sorry, treats wastewater to public access standards, stores more than 712 million gallons at two reservoirs and 11 tanks, and delivers approximately 25 million gallons per day of high-quality reclaimed water to 41,200 residents in a variety of other customers and locations. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares May 17 through May 23, 2021, as water reuse week and calls upon citizens and businesses to help protect our precious water resources by practicing water-saving measures and using reclaimed water in an efficient and effective manner. Done and resolved with a quorum present and voting this fourth day of May, 2021.
Motion.
Move a call.
Second. A motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. Chris, thank you for coming today. And I'll come down with this resolution. Want to take a picture, maybe the board.
Thank you, Commissioners.
It's pretty important what goes on with reuse. Our neighboring counties that, to our south, haven't had that privilege of being able to use that water like we do for watering our yards. And they're having to use potable water because they can't go back in and pipe back in through the cities and use that water in a good way. We've been very fortunate in our growth and happening at a time when this was all available to us and we were able to make this happen in our county, which is very much a plus and takes care of a lot of reclaimed water that we wouldn't have a way to get rid of it otherwise. So.
Yes, and we appreciate your support.
Yep.
You and the Commissioners.
Word for Jormi.
I'm serving as their unofficial PIO.
Now we move on to the consent agenda. I have a pool sheet of C16 withdrawal, C18 withdrawal, C41 pull and revise, C2 pull and discuss, C31 pull and revise. What's the pleasure of the board on the rest of the consent?
For the remaining consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. So C16 withdrawn, C18 withdrawn, C41 pull and revise.
Ms. Chair, I'd recommend you C2 first before we do the rest of them.
I can. Yep, we'll do C2. This is the resolution proclaiming May 2021 as Older Americans Month. Anne Marie Warner, if you'll come forward. I noticed you have with you some guests. If they would like to come stand with you, it'd be fine. Mr. Bob Hatfield, recognizing he represents Congressman Gus Villaraca's office, and he's here with you, so. Good, we're glad to have you. Anne Marie is the Executive Director, Area Agency on Aging for Pasco and Pinellas Counties. Does a wonderful job. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 21-174, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, proclaiming May 2021 as Older Americans Month. Whereas Pasco County continues, includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes and difficulties. And res, Pasco County benefits from people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience. And whereas Pasco County and the Area Agency on Aging of Pasco Pinellas recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to strive in times of both joy and difficulty. And res, Pasco County and the Area Agency on Aging of Pasco Pinellas can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby proclaims May 2021 to be Older Americans Month and urges every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our community. Done and resolved with a quorum present and voting this fourth day of May, 2021.
Move a call.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion passed 5-0. Welcome, Ms. Warner.
Thank you so much, Chairman Oakley and Commissioners. I just want to thank you very much for recognizing May as Older Americans Month. Every day is Older Americans Day in the United States. We have the privilege and the honor of serving the greatest generation to make sure that they can continue to thrive and live independently. We couldn't do that without our board. I'm happy to welcome Commissioner Fitzpatrick, who represents the Board of County Commissioners on our board and some of the esteemed members that I've brought today. In addition, we could not do what we do without our incredible partners, which includes Pasco County. Brian Hovin is here today and CARES. Last year, because of funding from the federal and state government, we were able to serve 44,000 seniors to help them live and stay in their homes. And we couldn't do that without your support. And for that, we're very grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions or any?
Thank you for everything you do. It's very important that they can stay in their homes as long as possible.
If y'all join, we'll come down in front of the desk.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick is talking.
Oh, go ahead. I didn't thought she was done.
All right, I was just saying thank you for everything you do. It's very important that they are able to stay in their homes as long as possible. Thank you.
Commissioner Oakley, I think we should stay up here on this one. That's a large group.
Okay, if you don't think, just line up back here, and I'll go down and present, so.
Can I? Down.
Oh, we're not getting closer? Why not?
Commissioner Oakley?
Okay, that makes sense. We'll move that one.
Chairman.
Chairman. May I come down to some quarters?
Can I come down? Oh, yeah, yes, yes. We had two people log in after we were on.
All right, everyone, look right at me. We've got four cameras on this one.
All right, and Bob's.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Should move.
As long as independently as possible.
Okay.
I was just informed that someone was logged in during public comment, but under a different name. And they've called in to advise that they would have liked to have spoken during public comment. We just did not know that they were the person that logged in because they logged in under a different name than they registered.
Okay, are they on the phone right now?
Are they logged into WebEx at this time? Is that the DG there? David and Gray?
They're logged in?
Yes.
Okay. We'll step back into public comment for this one person that we didn't hear earlier.
Please state your name and address for the record, and then you may proceed.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Thank you. This is Nancy Gray. I live at 802 Adonis Road in Newport Riche, Florida, 34654. Good morning, and thank you for your time. Coming before you to request help with Deer Lake. I sent you an email last week and a map yesterday. I'm sure you understand that Deer Lake used to be connected to other lakes through underwater caves. This lake is clogged up, and I can only assume others are also. Neighbors on grave have had flooding into their homes. One continues to deal with mold from last year. And due to the flooding, we lose up to half of our backyards for six months at a time. There's only four residents that are affected. All the big bucks around the lake are Wells Fargo, chiropractor, and commercial land that's for sale. Finding a solution dates back to Mike Wells when he was a commissioner. We've had no resolution except for pumping the lake one time for 24 hours and re- for twenty-four hours and redirecting water running off ridge to grave to Adonis, only to flood cantly. Ditches and swales were not the answer. They spoke of a retaining wall or redirecting the water to the stormwater system. It hasn't been done. Reem Aquatics contracts with Florida cleans out turnpike waterways. They can do the same in this lake and more. They dredge all the muck out, they pull the vegetation, and it can be treated with a pre and probiotic and create a healthy, live lake again. We are respectfully requesting that you take the necessary action and have the work done, clean out the lake before the rain starts. I've been requesting this since two thousand and sixteen. If this project is going to fall on us, the contaminated road material, the driveway, the roof runoff water into the lake has to stop. It's a lake. If we're expected to pull our own permit, clean out the mess that we didn't create, maintain the lake that we never knew was ours, we need to own it and not pay property taxes on it. The fact is, we didn't cause it. It cleaned up. The county attorney's office sent Swift Mud and myself an email yesterday stating Pasco County does not own the lake. It's simply tagged as Pasco County facilities, so it will not be assessed for taxes. It might be considered to be sovereign submerged land. I think that means it belongs to Florida. I spoke with John at Swift Mud this morning. We don't own it. We cannot get a permit. Someone has to take responsibility. County has allowed overflow from ridge into the lake. Mosquito control has sprayed. They will send someone out to look at the lake, and the businesses also have to share in this. But their buildings were approved by Pasco County. To conclude, we as homeowners just want our property to use, to enjoy, and not be flooded up anymore. Please ask me all the questions you need to. I'll do my best to answer it, or I'll get you to answer. But please make a decision now, or we'll clean out the lake if it's flooding. Please, questions?
Thank you for your comments. Okay. No one else?
No, there was a person on now, but was not on during public comment, is what I'm being told. Um, it was after public comment was closed.
Okay. Were they signed up for?
They were previously signed up.
We allow another one to speak.
Words discretion.
If she's, um, she or he is available to speak now, we allow him to speak.
That she's still online.
Okay.
That's me.
Name and address, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Honeywell, go ahead and state your name and address. Oh, Sharon Honeywell?
This you. Oh, it is. I'm sorry. My name is Sharon Honeywell Johnson. I live at one seven three zero zero Riverstone Drive. And I'm just talking about the Meadowbrook subdivision that was, um, talked about previously, that we still oppose the, um, land use adoption. That's really it. It's the same thing that Luke and Todd also spoke about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. All right. Now let's move back into the consent. Adams.
Can't see. I can't hear it. I'm hearing through you. I couldn't hear what I was saying.
You can go ahead and sign off. Catch your comment. Okay, uh, C sixteen was withdrawn, C eighteen withdrawn, C forty-one is pulling revise. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, Marcy Esper, Director of Community Development. Uh, this item is an agreement with HTG Osprey Point Apartments, uh, using our State Housing Initiative Partnership Program dollars. And unfortunately, the agreement that was scanned in was scanned in, uh, single-sided, but it was a double-sided agreement. You all have the twenty-six full pages now. Move to approve the Osprey agreement.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion pass five zero.
Thank you.
C thirty-one pulling revise.
Morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'm Alex Parnes, the County Surveyor. Uh, this item has to be pulled and revised. There was a mismatch on the bond number versus the agenda memo. It has since been corrected.
We approve.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed, aye? All right. Motion pass five zero. Okay. That ends the consent agenda. And we have no regular items to debate.
Yeah, sorry, you did R forty-three.
R forty-three? Oh, yeah, okay. We do. Go ahead.
Please just wait for them up. Wait for them.
Wait on him.
Morning. Artful delay. Bob Gorig, Pasco County Budget Director. Uh, the item you have before you authorizes the county to pursue the second tranche of the general obligation bonds to complete the library renovations. With your permission, I'll read the title into the record at this time. This is a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, supplementing Resolution number one nine dash five nine adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, which authorized the issuance of the Pasco County, Florida General Obligation Bonds, Libraries, Projects, Improvements in one or more series in the original aggregate principal amount of not to exceed eighteen million, six hundred thousand dollars, authorizing not to exceed amount of nine million, five hundred seventy-one thousand, fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents of general obligation bond Series twenty twenty-one A for library projects improvements, fixing certain details of said bonds, approving the form of the summary notice of sale and official notice of sale with respect to such bonds, delegating to the county administrator or budget director the authority to determine the principal amount of such bonds to be issued and the bid date with respect to such bonds, to award the sale thereof to the lowest conforming bidder based on the bid submitted at public sale and to determine the terms of such sale, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a disclosure dissemination agreement, appointing the bond registrar and paying agent, approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary official statement and authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement pertaining to the bonds, authorizing certain officials of the county to execute any document or to take any action required in connection with the issuance of said bonds, providing certain other matters in connection therewith, providing for the severability of parts hereof if declared invalid, and providing for an effective date. That is the title. The county administrator and I, sorry, county attorney and I are here. If there are questions, we also have the county's bond council is joining us virtually if you have any questions in that regard.
Are there any questions?
We approve.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion pass five zero. Thank you. Okay, that ends the regular items. And all right, we go into, um, this lane's business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thank you to Buck's Chief Operating Officer, Brian Ford, for, uh, being here today and bringing the Lombardi Trophy. Um, obviously, we're very happy to have them in the community and work closely with them. So again, thanks again, Mr. Ford and the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. Second, uh, this week is National Travel and Tourism Week. We did, had a resolution on the consent agenda. So I thank all the commissioners for passing that, uh, Travel and Tourism Week resolution. Um, you know, probably almost every meeting, I mentioned some great things going on here with tourism and the Florida sports coast. This week, this Thursday, as most of you know, I think everybody's going to be there is the, um, team up, building a stronger economy together event with the Florida sports coast and the Pasco EDC. I think this partnership was a great idea to put the two things, to put the two together, um, this year. There's a lot of things, obviously, they share and work together on, especially when it comes to economic development, and they're both focused on bringing, you know, economic development opportunities to the county. So after we adjourn at noon, if you're available, if everybody could come outside, um, Adam's going to stick around and we're going to do a, a photo outside for Tourism Week in front of the fountain, so if everybody's available. And just an update on New River Library. I'm happy to let everybody know. Kathy's back there. The New River Library is in the process of reopening after the GO bond renovations. So thank you to the citizens of Pasco County for supporting our libraries. And thank you to the commission for supporting our libraries as well. If I'm not correct, Kathy, they're in a kind of a sneak preview period right now. Limited services available, but mid-May, I think it will be fully online, if that's not correct. So exciting stuff. I've seen a lot of pictures and videos. Look forward to going out there this next week. And I'm not going to bring, really have a discussion on this, but I'm going to ask, and I think some of you will probably agree with this, if maybe the county administrator could have the team bring back an update for us on the harbor plan. We really haven't heard much about that lately. I know that's something that everyone, each and every one of us are very, you know, supportive of, but we haven't heard much about it lately. So I just want to see how things are moving forward. I think we definitely need an update on that. If we can maybe arrange that for the, I know the next meeting's pretty stacked, so maybe the one after that, give you guys time to prepare.
We'll schedule it in June.
Okay, that could be good. Anybody agree with that?
May eighteenth, we've got another item coming up, so maybe it's good to combine. May eighteenth is an item coming up for.
May eighteenth's a long meeting. The draft, based on the draft agenda, that's going to be a long meeting. So I would recommend do it in June. We can still do it on the eighteenth, but that's going to be a long meeting with, with, without this.
I think Commissioner Stark, you wanted to add something?
I'll do it in my.
Okay, cool. That's it out. That's all I have. We can just bring that forward. That'd be great.
Um, uh, kind of on that same note, um, I've been working with, uh, newly, newly elected Councilman Mike Peters.
Yep.
Um, on some projects, and I mentioned that we used to have joint meetings between Newport, Ritchie, and Port Ritchie, and I think it's a good time to try and get another one scheduled. And I think that, you know, the harbors project, uh, would be a great topic for that joint meeting. Um, so, you know, I have no thoughts on when it should be, um, but just want to throw it out there. I think we should go ahead and schedule something and talk about where we are on numerous projects. Dredging, trails, you know, whatever, so. Um, and that might be a good place to have a hub.
We'll, we'll look at, see if we can find a facility where we can socially distance and make sure that the crowd works. That's kind of the challenge in the east, on the west side, so we'll, and then we'll work and get some of the schedule.
Okay, um, also, I, uh, received a letter from the Florida Engineering Leadership Institute up for a community project. Um, it's from a engineer named Jordan Nelson, and, uh, he's also a member of the Swamp Club, which is the, um, off-road bike riding club that maintains the off-road trails in Starky Park. And they want to, um, put in seven, let's see, seven hotspots, towers, uh, in areas like, for example, I think when you're riding your bike out in the woods, there you may not have good cell reception, and I think sometimes it's very important for, uh, emergency situations. Um, so I just want to make sure that we are, um, working on, on these. These will be off-grid, um, hotspots and, uh, and, like, you said Keith's looking into that? Okay, so Keith. So it's a nice project.
Yeah, there's a, there's an operations cost to that, so, you know, it's not free, so. But Keith's, Keith's evaluating that for his parks.
Yeah, there's a maintenance cost associated with it. Community buying is critical, yeah. They put one in in, um, Okeechobee. So, uh, anyway, thank you to them for thinking of us, and I think it's a great idea, especially for safety.
That it?
For now.
For now. Okay. Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Um, I would like to say I attended a women's summit at Hope with Every Smile at Smile Faith Foundation. They're going to offer free dental care and dental services for human trafficking, domestic violence, and addiction recovery survivors. And they're also going to be offering free dental care for children that have aged out of foster care. And they will be having, Smile Faith will be having an event on May twenty-ninth. They'll have a five K race, and that same day, they'll offer free dental services for victim, uh, for veterans. Um, I was also honored. I was able to go to the celebrity lunch for Marjorie's Hope. They were able to raise twenty thousand dollars in an hour and a half. And I would like to thank Debbie Shakowsky for putting that on. They give free, they provide free backpacks and clothing for children. The next one was, I was honored to present the Hartwood Preserve Conservation Cemetery. Um, I was actually able to provide the Waterwise, present the Waterwise Award for the, for them. And it was an honor to present that to Ms. Laura Starkey. Earlier in the day, I also was driving to the meeting, and I had met Ian on the side of the road, and he was picking up garbage, and I had stopped and met with him. And I would just like to encourage everyone, whether wherever you're at, pick up a few pieces of garbage on the side of the road or wherever you're at, whether it's the baseball fields or at park or just anywhere in the community. And lastly, I would like to say, save the date for Pasco Backs the Blue event on October sixteenth from two to ten. That will be at Gil Dogs. Oh, and one more thing is I went out and I know Commissioner Mariano is going to mention Lakeside Woodlands, but I was able to receive a photo of the area, and I know Mr. Mariano, Commissioner Mariano has photos of what it looks like now, so I did put all those in as well.
The pleasure.
That was from one of the residents, and I was surprised, and I would be very nervous living in there as well, so. I understand their concern. Thank you. There was five homes in that area. I know they mentioned three. I did walk it, so there are five homes in the barricade. Thank you.
Is everything? All right, Mr. Marano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go right to Lakeside Woodlands. Um, this is a neighborhood, um, right next to Beacon Woods. It's probably three hundred yards from my way, the first house I bought in Pasco County many years ago. And, uh, the area that you just showed was a little retention area that was there. It happens to be with a major part of this cavern goes right under and crossing Willbrook Court. Um, so the Willbrook Court Road is a county road, and it's completely unusable. Um, we had engineers taking a look at it to try to even like build a bridge over the road to secure it like we did over in Clark Tower on both sections, north and south, over the same cavern. Uh, those worked out well. This one here, they say it just cannot be done. You know, when, when I think back to the, uh, the gentleman lived in a home in Tampa, and there was a sinkhole under his house, and it just kind of like without notice, all of a sudden, boom, it went down. He got swallowed up inside, never to be recovered. These people are living in that same situation of fear every single day. Because only the home has to be affected for insurance company to be able to step in or for even us to go condemn it. Um, we're limited, and staff has tried that, and, and the people have tried it with their insurance company. So it's a, a completely unique situation. And I'll say back to the technology, maybe many years ago, it wasn't used or couldn't have been used to detect what was under there, because I will tell you, this would never have been approved, uh, in my opinion, right now, if you try to get it done. Uh, the cavern's there. The scariest part is people are hearing things. They've had pipes break. I mean, when it first happened, I had, you know, one set of neighbors right across the street from this. Uh, they had just spent four or five grand having a pipe company to come in and replace their pipes for them, uh, at their own dime. Not even the insurance company would pay for it because it's outside the house. So these people at, at risk, I mean, you heard, we've got single moms with a son who's afraid to have the son go out and play in the yard. Um, you've got pets that, you know, could be in danger. We got, we got a purple heart veteran with heart problems and, you know, an ulcer that uh, he, he's trying to deal with. Uh, we got senior citizens out there. Everybody in there is living, uh, in fear. Uh, the road's not permitted for driving, so keep in mind, you got, you know, fences blocking off the roadway. If you're inside that whole mix, you've got to take all the way down. Now, emergency access, um, you know, we, we've spent a lot of money all over this county to try to protect our people for quality of life reasons. Um, and if we can't get our people in there with our trucks, I mean, even our own paramedics, if they had to go there, they're either wheeling it all the way in there, or they're driving the truck over, and we're even putting our own supplies and our own people at risk if we're going to try to save someone. Uh, there's no mosquito control, no sewer cleaning permitted, no garbage trucks to go in there. Um, every things, everyday things we take for granted, just like you're going to go, go shop and go get your groceries. shop and go get your groceries, you got to wheel it in, wheel it out. If you're going to do any type of repairs, like a roof or an air conditioning, the trucks can't get in there. I mean, the whole quality of life of what's going on here, it's done. The county can never, as they say, reopen the road. How do we help them? The situation is unique. They had looked, and I want to say, Commissioner Starkey, you know, we're up in Tallahassee, how you really help with DEO, we try to like look at every way. I know federally you tried to help, and I let them all know that all the work that you were doing to try to make these things happen. And they're very appreciative, the whole board, putting, you know, Andy Foster and the whole team who worked tremendously hard, three different grants, which I'll talk about in a second, to try to get funding to try to help with the bio. And each and every single one of them got denied for different reasons. But these people are in a situation that's not good for the county. It could be really devastating if any one of these things collapses and anybody dies by this thing going in and taking a home, which, you know, obviously we don't want to see. And it's just to a point where we've got, we've tried all the options we could to try to get them help outside of us, but it comes down, it falls on our backs. You know, we're the ones who's going to step up and help them with the situation or they're just going to be in risk, at risk, at risk, and that's just not, I don't, I don't think what we want to do.
Commissioner, do you mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
You could. Ms. Chairman? If you leave that photo up real quick, can you show me, I mean, okay, this red line, is that where the road is officially closed?
I believe so, right? Yeah.
Okay, so you've got one, two, three, four, five, five, six, seven.
There's two houses, the one on each side of the grassy area and then across the street. So it's those five houses that are board barricaded off.
Four, five, okay. How many homes are actually condemned or red tagged?
We haven't condemned any.
None.
That's all it was. Okay. Okay.
That's the problem.
There's all value, yeah. So unlike the situation that happened, Lando Lakes, where there were some homes that were condemned and paid off by insurance and then we, what we did with the road to allow people to still come on both sides, this is the case. Yeah, you have a situation where you have five homes that you would have to get out of the car, park on the street and walk to them to get to your home. Yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure I was right. Mr. Miles and I were speaking about this, I just wanted to make sure the numbers are right.
Yeah, and then you know what, at Lando Lakes, and I think a lot about that, how we stepped up and did the right thing, but in a lot of those homes, when they were collapsing in to the lake, you know, they actually built the lake, homes on the lake that wasn't there before, so reclaimed it. So they got insurance claims. These people in a different situation, but it's very precarious because literally this, this cavern runs up from Clock Tower Parkway, where cares is in the back. A giant sinkhole that's right there. That's part of this whole thing. On Teakwood Lane, we had that, those homes, one was condemned and we uncondemned it later on, right alongside, it runs the same river. Clock Tower on the north part, south part, the same cavern, we were able to build a bridge over the road, asphalted over to keep it going, but that thing carries over and goes right down this way here. So all these little pockets, they may not go under a house and frankly, they haven't, but they're all around it in the yards, et cetera. If one of them would go, then we could have done that, but in two, in 21 months, it hasn't happened. But again, now that these things are open up again, it could happen in any single spot. And when you, when you hear the lady that talked that she talked about how she hears rumblings underneath, that's a river running underneath there and every time something moves, for us to fill that up, the water pulled it out again. It's going to continue to do that. So it's really a very dangerous situation for these folks and there's, there's no other, no other cure. Eric, you want to talk about the grants, what we did to go through? They've got in your agenda memo, so I'll let you speak to it.
Yes, sir. Eric Breitman, Assistant County Administrator for Internal Services. Emergency management has pursued no less than five opportunities to secure outside funding for, to assist these homeowners. Everything from a hazard mitigation grant related to Michael to a CDBG mitigation grant, building resilient infrastructures in communities. And then they also pursued a couple of other disaster recovery or building resilient communities programs and they were all denied primarily because the, there's a 2015 FEMA policy that cites the structures have to exhibit damage before they'll be able to entertain them for any grant funding. And so that's not occurred in this case.
Then Eric, as far as like the, the scope of people involved, the number of homes, is seven the number we're looking as far as to do the demolition and all?
Initially, there were a total of 15 homes affected, sir. When we started pursuing grant opportunities to, to buy, buy properties and relocate homeowners, seven expressed interest in participating in that, the other eight did not.
Okay, and those seven are one in that area with it?
Yes, they're primarily in the area that's blocked off by the road. There's one, one house that's outside the, the road closure area that has, that's part of the original 15 affected, that's expressed interest in, in selling their property and relocating.
What, what is NP?
Not participating. They did, they chose not to participate in the efforts thus far to secure external funding to buy out the house and remediate it. So those are the NP, the houses designated with NP are the ones that did not choose to participate up to this point.
And the, and the figures that you totaled from appraisal is done from 21 months ago or so?
The figures are from the just value from the property appraiser's website currently, sir.
Okay, all right. I mean, I would like to see us bring this back for an agenda item at the next meeting. Let's go put a plan together as far as what it would be to do the acquisition and bring something before the board so we can actually look at it and, you know, take staff's recommendation and they can do whatever presentations the board members want to have, have added to
That gives them time to come back with some ideas, yeah.
What do you want to do in June?
Well, I would, so, I mean, there's a lot of different options we need to run down and, you know, in defense, you know, this Southern Emergency Management is working, they are well versed in it, but they've not really started to coordinate with other county departments or the county attorney's office with respect to a plan. So if the board wants us to investigate how to do this and develop a plan, we're probably going to need more than two weeks to be able to bring you back something. So I would, I would recommend at least sometime, maybe the Newport Richie meeting in June, that gives us time to work internally, work with the county attorney's office to make sure that we have something that you can actually, I don't want to bring you a plan that, that there are fatal flaws with. I want to make sure we vet all that before you, we bring you some options, so.
And I'm okay with that time because I tell you, the staff has done a phenomenal job trying to work this situation as hard as they can, every, every which way to get money for this thing to work. If we were in a situation like we're in Lando Lakes, I would say, let's go pull the hammer down right now, but I'd rather see us look at extensively, what's the best way to go about this, because the demolition part is going to be tricky too. Because you're going to take these homes in, you got to, it's not going to be just a regular move. So I think the June meeting, especially when I hear how busy May is anyway, I think June would be good, give you time. If, if need be, we can go from there, but let's go plan for the June meeting to bring it forward.
Okay. One thing, Commissioner Mariano and Derek, when we were meeting with Kevin Guthrie on this in Tallahassee, he did have a very bright staffer who was going to take a look at seeing if within the earthquake mitigation money that this would fit. So I want to make sure we're re-touching back with them because the last communication we had was that they were going to be looking in on that. So Derek, would you mind following up with her? And let's make, and you know, make sure staff is connected with her and see if she's found any results yet because, and, and the reason why she's thinking this way is because there's movement. If they, if they, if you look at the homes over time, the, the houses are shifting and she's, so it was her idea that maybe we look at it at a different kind of funding for this program because, and it frankly, if there isn't one in FEMA, there needs to be one. And that's another avenue, but we can talk with, with our federal lobbyists is, because it just seems to fall outside of these cracks, it's really, it, it needs to be in there somewhere. You know, citizens shouldn't be left hanging like this.
Well, I appreciate all your efforts and the board, I appreciate your approval with it. And again, the time is very critical that we move on this, especially before hurricane season, because part of the reason all this happened was from storm events when waterways flowed. So I think June, we still got time before heavy events happen, so I think, I think that still can work. All right, thank you very much. Next thing, to the county's attorney's office, Mr. Stein-Schneider?
Yes.
On the boat covers, it was brought to me and I, I thought they were going to send you something, but I never saw anything, so I'm just going to ask you the question. And the question was, is it legal to differentiate boat covers or just the way you treat in regular legislative from canals versus lakes? Have you been asked that at all?
Yes.
Okay.
And we, we went through that analysis during the time where you adopted the ordinance that distinguished those two.
All right, so you feel comfortable with that?
I've said that that's as, as much as I can slice and dice, a distinction.
Okay, all right, because that was, that was a question I was waiting for, I'd never saw it and maybe that was why, but I just want to run that by. The, the people in, you know, everywhere other than Gulf Harbor, let's say on these canals, has been a really strong push to say, they want the freedom to protect their boats. So they're going, they'll still continue to contact you, but I just want you to know that's, you've, you've heard their public input. On another note, I think I sent you this as well about the panhandling ordinance. Text message I got from, from the sheriff's office stated something like, Commissioner, there's nothing the sheriff's office can do about panhandling. It has been found to be a protected constitutional right. I can address trespassing, but not panhandling. So to the county attorney, we're struggling with people just going out there and, and, you know, when people are out there, panhandling is just, it's a detriment for the area. People don't like to see it. Somehow they, they dress, we had one out there with a, just a, like a topless, you might say, no shirt on, just shorts, just going around. I've got other people well dressed out there going on. And in the, if they're in the right of way, let's say between two streets, can they?
Yes.
Remove them from that spot?
Yes, because it's dangerous.
Yes. The legal answer is yes.
Heard from both attorneys.
Backseat attorney.
The, so, my assistant county attorney and sheriff's general counsel, I believe, agree that based on the, the federal case that came out, our solicitation ordinance can't be enforced. As I think we discussed when, when we talked, we do have the secondary ordinance on trespass. And so if our belief is in the median, if they're in the median, that that area can, they can still be told that that's not an appropriate place to stand and, and moved away. Now, if they are on the public sidewalk, that's not going to work. Because it's a public sidewalk.
You never see them on the sidewalk. They're in the medians.
So I, I still think that the, the ordinance that we have in place with regard to trespass will work for, not for the, not for the, the passing out of water bottles or accepting money, but to keep them off that median area because of, because it's dangerous.
Okay, all right, so I see Alex from the sheriff's office, come on up.
The motion?
Alexander Al, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer for the Pasco Sheriff's Office. So, okay, so basically what Mr. Stein-Schneider has already articulated is this is basically the same position we have, is that if they are, so it came from the middle district of Florida, that panhandling is considered a First Amendment right. And if that is all they are doing, then we are not able to enforce the ordinance that would prevent that. Now, if they are impeding traffic or in the right of way, that is a different case and also is if they are trespassing private property, again, that would be a different case, that would be trespassing. So as far as panhandling itself by itself goes, again, we would defer to Mr. Stein-Schneider's articulation of it.
All right, so I will tell you that, and Commissioner Starkey can talk about your areas, but I'll tell you that the key areas for me are that I see them in Hudson Avenue in 19, 19 and 52, and Beacon Woods Drive in US 19. They're all in the median. If you guys could keep an eye to that and I'll, I'll keep sending the pictures to the cabin.
Sure, sure. Yes, sir.
Let's just go, go for trespassing. When I say panhandling, we're going to say trespassing from here on through.
Sure.
Okay.
Commissioner Mariano, I take a photo of it when I see it and I send it to Captain Frigga and he sends somebody. I mean, they, they can't be standing in the middle of the road in a dangerous place.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
They can say, get off the median and get on the sidewalk and they can panhandle at the corner, sadly, but they can't be in the middle of the road, is my understanding.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Miles?
Yes, sir. A couple things from the good news item, then I'll, I got the March or April permit numbers, I'll kind of give you a highlight of that, what's going on there. And then if, if, Mr. Chair, if you're going to bring up the, the video from Moffett, I won't, so I'll let you introduce some Moffett video if you want. This is pretty routine, but Animal Services won another couple more state awards for, you know, that, I think I say that about every other month with Animal Services, but they won a couple more state awards. And then just want to let everybody know that fam tours are back in business. DMO did their first fam tour last month, so they're, so that's the first one since the pandemic started where they had people in visiting, you know, the Florida Sports Coast and our things to kind of go back and advertise and write about what you can do here in Pasco. So slowly getting back to normal in that area as well. So just, just quick high level overview, we're up almost double last year, year-to-date in single-family home permits and we're up over 30% in commercial, which is, you know, that's, that's key, right? Because that's, that's tax base right there. So a lot going on and we've actually probably, in the next couple of days, will have issued more single-family home permits than we issued in all of 2018, all of 2018. So that's the rate we're going and if, if the trend continues, we will actually double our 2020 number in 2021. It's really close right now, so. Lot going on, lot of inspections happening, both with our team and with the private providers. And I think we all are hearing from the building industry that, you know, they have some material issues and, and labor issues, but they are going full throttle right now in Pasco County. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll let you introduce some Moffett video when it comes up, but it's ready, it's teed up for you.
Can I, can I ask a quick question? And Dan, right now, you've got a situation where people are slow in permitting, they go private and we don't even charge them anything extra right now.
The administrative fee, there's still some fees that, that they do have to pay as part of the permitting process.
Minimal, I think that's a smart move, it's what we did many years ago, so when anything dropped off, we were fine. And someone brought up an idea to me, and maybe you can review this, they, in St. Lucie County, they have some, some sort of a expediter, and I don't know if that's the right term or not, but to help people where they can pay an extra fee to help someone expedite through the permitting process. Have you ever, ever heard of that?
We, we have that on the.
EDC.
We have that on the planning side, expedite permit, but it got to this point where everybody was paying for expedited, which kind of meant nobody was getting expedited review.
Well, if you're going to pay extra money for it, couldn't you hire more people to help them expedite it through?
If there were people actually out there, we could hire, yes, sir. But the problem, we're having the same labor issues that the industry is having. If you talk to engineering firms, architectural firms, construction firms, everyone's having labor issues. You know, it's.
That's everywhere.
So if, if they were out there, yes, sir. You know, and, and we are actively working and recruiting. In fact, there's a job fair today here in Dade City, a Pasco County job fair here in Dade City today, where we're trying to hire people. So, you know, we're working it. Right now, it's, it's an issue across the industry. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Stein-Schneider?
Just sort of a heads up for the board, there is some movement on the opioid litigation, especially with the legislation that was bouncing around this session where the Attorney General wished to have the authority to stop political subdivisions from getting into cases like that. There is ongoing negotiations between Attorney General Moody's office and the consortium of team of lawyers that is representing the political subdivisions throughout the country, including the ones that are representing us. That being said, I may need a litigation assessment meeting at some point. I hope that it will be the June meeting and not the May meeting to get some direction from the board about where we go with that litigation, but the Attorney the board about where we go with that litigation, but the Attorney General's office has made a proposal that is still being worked through about how any settlement monies from the opioid industry would be divvied up between the state and local governments, you know, what the percentage is would be to flow with, with each, because basically, the industry is not willing to settle unless they're sure that basically all the litigation goes away and they know what the check is that they have to write. And so as soon as I get some more information about that, I will either contact you all individually, or we'll set up a litigation assessment meeting. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you.
Men, clerk.
Thank you very much, just real quick, I'm just happy to inform you that the fiscal year 1920 annual comprehensive financial report had to change those, those are names for political reasons, but anyway, the annual comprehensive financial report has been completed as part of it, we included the single audit this year with it, so that's great, the single audit is, it covers your federal and state major grant programs, so I wanted to basically extend my gratitude to my financial services team, and specifically Manny Long and Matt Lozare and their leadership in this, it's a Herculean effort to get this done every year, and in that, we do, we work very closely with the county's team, we are constantly asking for information to respond to the external auditor, and I just wanted to say, both our teams are amazing, and we couldn't put it together without this effort between the county and the clerk's office. So this is the financial statements for the county that is examined by an external auditor. That report is also posted on my website for the public to view as well, and I emailed it to you a couple of days ago, I just wanted to make the comment on record and to thank both of our teams for the efforts. Thank you.
I believe I have some pictures, if you'll put up the one for, I attended the 2021 Water Awareness, this is that picture, Mr. Cavala was with me.
That was quick.
Get to stay lovely long, and that's another picture, but the second picture is, that doesn't stay up long, is it on timer? Y'all playing jokes for me today.
There you go.
Now, there's a contest, has anybody ever been to the Urban Area Adventure Park? If you haven't been there, it's a really neat place, I tell you, all indoors, all air-conditioned, so if you're gonna work out, it's really a pretty neat place, so it's pretty amazing, and there, attendance there with people coming back in have started increasing, so it's right there in Newport Ritchie. Go to the next picture, oh, there you go. Some real good artwork, amazing ideas that some of the young kids have about the water cycle. Okay, go to the next picture, the next picture is Fire Rescue Station Number Nine, last Tuesday, May 27th, Lando Lakes, that's in Ms. Fitzpatrick's area there of the county, in her district, and it's, what's really important about this station, and of course, that was groundbreaking in nine, 10 months, we'll see a station there, but what's really amazing is the fact is this station was not just voted on by the commission, but this was part of the referendum we asked for our citizens to vote on, and this is one of the first stations that was approved by the citizens of our county, so we have a lot to be thankful for. If they hadn't have voted in, I think we still would have had to voted on this issue, and we would have, but it's great to know that your citizens in Pasco County feel the same way we do, and, and it's actually great to know that, that we're all on the same page moving forward with the growth that we're having here in this county, so.
And Mr. Chairman?
Pretty amazing.
Yes, sir. I think we make special notes, like Eric Breitenbach looks very serious about getting this thing done.
He was worried about the contractor being delayed by the ceremony.
Yeah, right, there you go. But it was good, that's, that's a great station, so, it's a four bay station, before this station goes in, the neighborhood south of this station was five miles from any station. So this fills in a gap that will bring service to the citizens a lot quicker than it did before, so it really helps out. Did you say we had the Moffett to play? I'd like to play that, they put out a video on Moffett Cancer Center.
Imagine a place where discovery and innovation intersect.
Think without boundaries, limitless capabilities.
A cutting-edge area of technology and entrepreneurship.
This is a first for any cancer center.
And this is the future of Moffett Cancer Center, 775 acres, larger than downtown Tampa, 16 million square feet of research, industrial and clinical space, making Moffett home to one of the largest medical cities in the country.
Been given a palette to create a masterpiece.
Real estate, jobs, healthcare.
We really did need to think bigger, and this is awfully big.
The epitome of a personalized patient experience and next-generation treatment driven by research.
From the moment that patient drives onto this campus, we want them to feel like they belong here.
It's gonna be data-driven and patient-informed.
Imagine the impact we can have if we have 8,000 scientists.
We can bring in carbon ion therapy, which is gonna be really the next generation of radiation oncology.
Destroying cancer in a greater way.
Focusing on cutting-edge technology and sustainable renewable resources.
Pasco is the epitome of the smart hospital, artificial intelligence.
Supercomputing power.
A mix of nature and innovation.
Renewable energy sources, do you go solar, you go wind, and you really say, wow, healthcare is doing amazing things.
Built beyond the idea of a cancer center, embracing community partnerships, healthy living and commerce.
We expand Moffett ideals to as broad of a community as possible.
Whole new center that is focused on wellness and preventing cancer.
Gyms, health clubs, walking trails.
It's exciting economically.
Over 14,000 jobs, and these will be many high-paying jobs.
Generating so much interest that it attracts entrepreneurship.
The evolution of Moffett starts now.
It's innovation, it's research, it's moving the needle forward.
And you're building an ecosystem for the future.
To be thinking so ahead of the game, that's why I love being at Moffett.
They're gonna move on right here in Pasco County.
Oh, yeah.
Great, it's amazing. So, all's good, anything else?
Meet outside.
Okay, we got a need to meet outside in front of the fountain, and we'll get a picture taken.
Okay.
So we'll.